Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Congratulations on your appointment.
Take it away.
I got my shoes.
I got my shoes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So much.
I really want to keep an eye on all of these.
Yeah, it's tough for them.
I'm very afraid.
I think I have it here. This is the little bit of garage.
First one to fix.
Little button right there, the green light comes on.
It might be on. It's on.
You have everybody now?
Yeah.
Good.
Gregory.
Eric.
Time to get.
All rise. Who's the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Ropel.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Savili.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Emma.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Mr. Latanzi.
Here.
Just to let you know, we have one member on the phone here. He's on vacation. So we have, what was it? We have eight members here now? Present? Okay. The first application is Gregory, 2203.
Excuse me. He's got to read the Sunshine Act first.
Good evening, everybody. I had a quick notice of this meeting as required on the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, has been provided by the annual notice sent to the borough's official newspaper and posted on the bulletin board of the municipal complex, a borough's website, and filed with the clerks of the bureau. Thank you.
John, continue.
No, sorry. Not a problem. Mr. Chairman, counsel, members of the board. I'm John Wisneski, Wisneski and Associates. I'm here tonight representing Kiran Gregory for a bulk variance for his fence, particularly the part of his fence that is on his side yard that, because it fronts on a street, is also considered a, has a special characterization within the borough code. But before we start, counsel, we've sent in to your colleague Carl the affidavit of publication and certification of service. And will you, are you accepting jurisdiction?
Yes, we accept jurisdiction.
Okay. So just a brief bit of background. Mr. Gregory is the owner and fee of Block 488, Lot 102. It's also known as 22 Grand Street in the Morgan section of Saraville. When he purchased the home, it had an old dilapidated chain link fence. He eventually got around to replacing that old dilapidated fence with a newer fence. He contracted with a company who told him that since you're just replacing the fence, no need to get a permit. He was wrong. And so he applied for the permit. And when he applied for the permit, the permit was denied because part of the fence that was replaced was within the setback on the side street that has a 10-foot requirement. And the existing fence was on the lot line. So the fence is replaced on exactly the same footprint that it was, but because the posts and everything were torn out to make way for the new fence, it doesn't constitute a replacement per se. It's actually a new fence. And so tonight, we're here to get approval from this board of a bulk variance. So with that, unless there are any preliminary questions from counsel or chair, I'd like to have Mr. Gregory come up and testify.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Gregory. Come on up. Counsel, you want to swear in?
Yes, please raise your right hand. Do you want to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay. Is this microphone sufficient?
I believe so.
Okay.
The two of them, Joan, on that?
Or do you want us to use the handheld one?
Okay. Well, if this is working, then I use my hands when I'm talking, so it's easier for me. So just so we can go through this and get all of the information on the record, are you the owner of 22 Grand Street in Morgan section of Saraville?
Yes, I am.
Approximately when did you purchase the property?
December 2003.
Describe for the board the kind of fence that surrounded the property when you purchased it and continued until recently.
It's basic chain link fence, pretty rusted. The gates were all not in alignment. It was pretty much an eyesore. It was frail. Parts were starting to break off. It was just pretty dilapidated.
Counsel, with your permission, I have exhibits that I'm going to be referring to. And I'd like to share them so that the board can follow along.
Were they previously submitted?
No. They're being submitted now. And they're all marked sequentially, A1 through A7.
Pass it.
No, he's just going to take my. Thank you. Thank you. So, Mr. Gregory, I want to show you what has been marked as A1, applicant's Exhibit 1, which is a copy of your survey. Does this accurately represent the status of your property?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And does it show where the original fence was and where the existing fence is?
Yes, the same spot.
Okay. And to the right side, Woodland Avenue side, is that the side of the property that is too close to the street under the current bulk regulations?
Yes, that's exactly what they said.
Okay. When you made the decision to improve the fence, did you contract with a company to change the fence out for you?
Yes, I did.
And who was that?
Carl Fencing.
And when you had Carl fencing come out, did they talk to you about a permit?
I'm using an existing fence, the posts, all the same area. We're just going to go in the same line and should not be, you really don't need it because you're replacing existing. Fence lines are already on the property in their land service. Okay.
Okay. And so after you had the fence put up, at some point in time, did you get a notice of violation?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm going to show you which marked as A2, the second page.
That's it.
That's the notice of violation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And in response to that notice of violation, did you file for a permit?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm going to show you which marked as A3. Is that what you, is that the notice you got after you filed for the permit?
Yes.
And what does the notice say?
It says, "Your application to permit for fence, six PVC corner lot on the property at 22 Grand Street," excuse me, South Ambley Block 488, Lot 102, "has been denied for noncompliance with provision Article Section 26-A2 dot seven of the municipal zoning ordinance for the following reasons. Proposed six-foot PVC fence encroaches front yard setback for corner lot, 10-inch minimal and zero feet proposed on lot line RZ," sorry, R7.
Okay. So it's safe to say you relied on the fencing contractor about his representation, about the need for a permit?
That's correct.
As soon as you found out that you needed a permit, you filed for one?
That's correct.
And when you found out you couldn't get a permit, you filed this application?
That is correct.
Okay. And the only thing that is noncompliant is the side yard on Woodland Avenue?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Okay. And is there a reason why you need to seek the relief you're seeking for the side yard on Woodland Avenue?
I have some trees in the corner that would have to be removed, and I'm losing a good portion of usable space in my backyard. It would cut down for a good chunk of my yard.
Okay. So I want to show you what's been marked as Exhibit 4. And there's Exhibits 4, 5, 6, and 7. These are photographs that you took?
That is correct.
Okay. So on Exhibit A4, does that represent the view from the front of your home?
Yes.
Toward the backyard where the new fence is?
That is correct.
And does it show the trees that would have to be removed?
Yes, the two back there. Yep.
Okay. Now I want to show you A5. Is this the side from Woodland Avenue?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that side where the fence is, that's exactly where the fence was before?
Same exact spot, even a double gate, identical.
So where the double gate is shown on A5, there was a double gate before?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, towards the right side of the photograph, those are the trees that would have to be removed?
Correct.
Okay. And then on Exhibit A6, this shows the back corner, does it not, of your property?
That is correct as well.
And again, it shows the several trees that would have to be removed?
That is correct as well.
Okay. And then finally, A7 is from the inside of your backyard?
Mm-hmm.
And it shows a grouping of trees?
Correct. That all have to, I guess it would have to come out. That all has come out.
Those trees would have to be removed? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, counsel, I have no further questions from Mr. Gregory. If the board or the audience, members of the public wants to question him? Anybody have any questions from the?
I was curious. I see all the trees. They all got to come out? And why do they need to come out?
From what I was told, the fence has to come right in the middle of some of them, or if not before. So I'd have to take them out because the whole fence would be a zigzag, and it would just be an eyesore, honestly. So they have it all uniform and symmetrical.
Got you.
Symmetry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have a question. Tom Kozinski. I just want to be sure where the fence is going. So it starts at one corner of your house and basically goes all the way around your back wall to the back corner of the other side?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public? Have a motion to close?
The public portion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Ask Jay, one question. Just for the record, Jay, there's no sight line problems here, right?
That's correct. The fence is out of the site triangle, so that's not a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Members, what's your pleasure on this?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve it?
Second.
Joan Ropel? Mr. Savili made a motion? And Phil Emma? Joan, Ropel, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Latanzi?
Yes.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Fence looks great, in fact.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. The next application is 2205, Daniel Barak.
Hello. Good evening, counsel.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you just give us a brief summary of what you're doing and what it's going to look like?
I'm installing a shed in my backyard. I'm trying to get rid of a trailer I have. I have two trailers. I just want to get the trailer off my driveway. A lot of it consumes my kid stuff, basketball, baseballs, the pool stuff, a few ATVs, and I wanted to just put everything in the shed to make life easier.
So are you saying this is more of a shed than a garage?
It's a little bit of both. I need the.
Will that be a driveway?
At the moment, no. It's in the process. I was just not possible to do it at the moment. I can't afford it right now.
And what's the material going to be that you're going to use for the shed?
It's a pre-made shed. I bought it, in the process of purchasing it, from US Shed on Route 9. So.
You have any pictures of it at all?
Actually, I do. My apologies. I should have made more. I didn't know.
Here. And this is another one.
I know.
I bought that A1 and A2.
Thanks, sir.
You have that little porch in front, too, like that?
That's going to be actually in the back. That's towards the pool area, so my wife can watch the kids.
Has it done real fast? One each way, I guess, right in the back. And the size of the shed is?
The complete size is 12 by 26. The rear six feet of it is the porch, and the interior is 12 by 20.
Okay.
Is that the height of the shed, too, that you're going to have?
That is correct.
And the height is how tall?
I believe it was 10 six, if I'm not mistaken.
10 foot?
10 foot and six inches.
Any different questions of how this is in design or whatever? Mr. Chairman, you and I had a conversation about, the application said garage, so we were a little confused as to what exactly you were going to go through, whether, because we saw that you had the railroad ties in the stone, and we were wondering if you had to actually have a foundation if it was going to be a garage. But it's basically a prefab shed that's going to go on the railroad ties in the stone that you already have in place. That's correct?
Yes. There's, it's already boxed out because the way they told me is that I don't need a shed in Saraville, and my mother kept insisting, I need a permit, I need a permit. They told me I don't need a permit, and I ended up going to Saraville, and I found out I need a permit.
And based on the size, you're going to need to go to the construction office and get a permit. They may require you to have certain anchorage on the shed, but that'll be dealt with when you make your application for the permit.
Okay.
There's no garage door in the back of it you're going to put, is there?
There actually is a garage door. Like, I don't know how to say. I didn't take a picture of that side. I just got excited. I took a picture of the front of it and the side.
But this shed, does it have a wooden floor? What kind of floor does it have?
Wooden floor.
So you probably couldn't drive a car on it, could you? It's just.
No, I don't think so. It's, I believe, 5'8" plywood, but I wouldn't, I'm not going to put anything that heavy in there. I need it from, like I said, I have ATVs and bikes I would like to store in there.
Okay. I think the confusion is that the application says garage, so we were interpreting it as this was indicated.
Well, I bought it from a shed place, probably the size of a garage, so I figured it was a shed, but.
But as was questioned, you're not going to have any vehicles in the, you may have an ATV or you may have bicycles, but it's not for driving cars in it?
No, absolutely not. No, no. I wouldn't trust the word.
What are the variances, just for the record?
Well.
The excessive accessory structure areas are limited to 150 square feet of area for accessory structure in the arid zone at 12 by 26, or 312 square feet. And it's an approaching in the front yard setback, 20 foot setbacks required where it's about 5 feet, I guess, for the, for the, for the.
I guess you couldn't put it closer to the house at this point.
Unfortunately.
Any other questions at all from the board?
Yeah, Jay, is there a site issue with this? Because it's at the end of the.
It's behind the fence.
There's not. The fence there already, I think, right?
Yeah.
There's a fence that's correct.
It'll be behind the fence.
Yes. Yeah, and the site triangle, he's out of the site triangle, so that's not an issue.
And is this shed up already?
No. I was in the process of purchasing it, and that was as far as I got. I put just a down payment on it, and the guy's been on it, and I refused to take it without the proper proceedings.
Okay.
And is there something, is there something existing there now? I'm looking at a satellite photograph and.
There, the only thing that's there now is, I guess, the footings for the shed.
Okay.
Like I said, I started it, and then I put a hole after I found out I needed a permit.
This is a pool in the backyard, right?
That is correct.
How close is the shed to the pool?
Um, approximately anywhere from 8 to 10 feet, I want to say.
I think that the drawing you're looking at, that the layout of the pool is not accurate. Okay. Because it looks close in the photo. If it was within 10 feet of the pool or 10 feet of the house, less than that, there would be additional variances required. So I believe that he's 10 foot away from the house, at least 10 feet away from the pool, so you don't have any issues with additional variances. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have one comment for the board's consideration. Based on the location of where this is, I don't think it must be terribly appropriate for the property to have a driveway running to it. I know there's been testimony that no vehicles are supposed to be stored in it. No ATVs and that nature necessarily a paved area to get something into the shed, but you can, or may want to consider a potential for the shed not extending the driveway over there as part of this because there's already quite a bit of driveway out in front of the house and bringing that more around here.
Right. Understood. Yeah. Would you have any?
I agree with that.
Do you have any problems with that as a condition of approval, that you wouldn't put a driveway up to it?
That I wouldn't put a driveway up to it?
Right.
No, I don't have no problems with that.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple more questions. These are just standard questions. Are you going to have any electric power to the shed?
Eventually, I will. I would like to, just to have some lighting in there.
What about water or sewage?
No.
Okay.
No water, no sewage.
Are you using the shed to run a business? Personal, personal?
Storage. Like I said, I have two.
Yeah, I'm just getting it on the record. Yeah.
I feel like that's more of an eyesore than anything else.
So there's no business being run out of the shed?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Open it up to the public? Have a motion to open up to the public?
I'm moved.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Make a motion to close to the public?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's your thoughts on this application?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve it?
Is there a second? Joan, Joan, Ropel?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Latanzi?
Yes.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Fence looks great, in fact.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. The next application is 2205, Daniel Barak.
Hello. Good evening, counsel.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you just give us a brief summary of what you're doing and what it's going to look like?
I'm installing a shed in my backyard. I'm trying to get rid of a trailer I have. I have two trailers. I just want to get the trailer off my driveway. A lot of it consumes my kid stuff, basketball, baseballs, the pool stuff, a few ATVs, and I wanted to just put everything in the shed to make life easier.
So are you saying this is more of a shed than a garage?
It's a little bit of both. I need the.
Will that be a driveway?
At the moment, no. It's in the process. I was just not possible to do it at the moment. I can't afford it right now.
And what's the? And what's the material going to be that you're going to use for the shed?
It's a pre-made shed. I bought it, in the process of purchasing it from US Shed on Route 9. So.
You have any pictures of it at all?
Actually, I do. My apologies. I should have made more. I didn't know.
Here. And this is another one.
I know.
I bought that A1 and A2.
You have that little porch in front, too, like that?
That's going to be actually in the back. That's towards the pool area, so my wife can watch the kids.
Has it done real fast? One each way, I guess, right in the back. And the size of the shed is?
The complete size is 12 by 26. The rear six feet of it is the porch, and the interior is 12 by 20.
Okay.
Is that the height of the shed, too, that you're going to have?
That is correct.
And the height is how tall?
I believe it was 10 six, if I'm not mistaken.
10 foot?
10 foot and six inches.
Any different questions of how this is in design or whatever? Mr. Chairman, you and I had a conversation about, the application said garage, so we were a little confused as to what exactly you were going to go through, whether, because we saw that you had the railroad ties in the stone, and we were wondering if you had to actually have a foundation if it was going to be a garage. But it's basically a prefab shed that's going to go on the railroad ties in the stone that you already have in place. That's correct?
Yes. There's, it's already boxed out because the way they told me is that I don't need a shed in Saraville, and my mother kept insisting, I need a permit, I need a permit. They told me I don't need a permit, and I ended up going to Saraville, and I found out I need a permit.
And based on the size, you're going to need to go to the construction office and get a permit. They may require you to have certain anchorage on the shed, but that'll be dealt with when you make your application for the permit.
Okay.
There's no garage door in the back of it you're going to put, is there?
There actually is a garage door. Like, I don't know how to say. I didn't take a picture of that side. I just got excited. I took a picture of the front of it and the side.
But this shed, does it have a wooden floor? What kind of floor does it have?
Wooden floor.
So you probably couldn't drive a car on it, could you? It's just.
No, I don't think so. It's, I believe, 5'8" plywood, but I wouldn't, I'm not going to put anything that heavy in there. I need it from, like I said, I have ATVs and bikes I would like to store in there.
Okay. I think the confusion is that the application says garage, so we were interpreting it as this was indicated.
Well, I bought it from a shed place, probably the size of a garage, so I figured it was a shed, but.
But as was questioned, you're not going to have any vehicles in the, you may have an ATV or you may have bicycles, but it's not for driving cars in it?
No, no, absolutely not. No, no.
Uh, the complete size is 12 by 26. The rear six feet of it is the porch and the interior is 12 by 20.
Okay.
Is that the height of the shed too that you can have?
That is correct.
And the height is how tall?
I believe it was 10...six, if I'm not mistaken.
10 foot?
10 foot and 6 inches.
Any different questions of how this is in design or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, you and I had a conversation about...the application said garage, so we were a little confused as to what exactly you were going to go through whether... because we saw that you had the railroad ties and the stone and we were wondering if you had to actually have a foundation if it was going to be a garage. But it's basically a prefab shed that's going to go on the railroad ties and the stone that you already have in place. That's correct?
Yes. There's a...it's already boxed out because the way they told me is that I don't need a shed in Saraville and my mother kept insisting, "I need a permit, I need a permit." They told me I don't need a permit and I ended up going to Saraville and I found out I need a permit.
And based on the size, you're going to need to go to the construction office and get a permit. They may require you to have certain anchorage on the shed, but that'll be dealt with when you make your application for the permit.
Okay.
There's no garage door in the back of it, you're going to put, sir?
Actually, there's a garage door. Like, uh, I don't know how to say...I didn't take a picture of that side. I just got excited, I took a picture of the front of it and the side.
But this shed, does it have a wooden floor? What kind of floor does it have?
Wooden floor.
So you probably couldn't drive a car on it, could you? It's just...
Nah, I don't think so. It's, uh, I believe 5A plywood, but I wouldn't...I'm not going to put anything that heavy in there. I need it from...like I said, I have ATVs and bikes I would like to store in there.
I think the confusion is that the application says garage, so we were interpreting it as...
Well, I bought it from a shed place, probably the size of a garage, so I figured it was a shed, but...
But as was questioned, you're not going to have any vehicles in the...you may have an ATV or you may have bicycles, but it's not for driving cars in it.
No, no, absolutely not. No, no. I wouldn't trust the word.
What are the variances, just for the record?
Yeah, the excessive accessory structure areas are limited to 150 square feet of area for accessory structure in the arid zone at 12 by 26 or 312 square feet. And it's approaching in the front yard setback, 20-foot setbacks required where it's about 5 feet, I guess it's the...for the, uh...
I guess you couldn't put it closer to the house at this point.
Unfortunately.
Any other questions at all from the board?
Yeah, Jay, is there a site issue with this? Because it's at the end of the...
It's behind the fence.
There's not.
There's a fence there already, I think, right?
Yeah.
There's a fence that's correct.
It'll be behind the fence.
Yes. Yeah, and the site triangle, he's out of the site triangle, so that's not an issue.
And is this shed up already?
No. I was in the process of purchasing it and, uh, that was as far as I got. I put just a down payment on it and the guy's been on it and I refused to take it without the proper proceedings.
And is there something...is there something existing there now? I'm looking at a satellite photograph and...
There...the only thing that's there now is, uh, I guess the footings for the shed.
Okay.
Like I said, I started it and then I put a hold after I found out I needed a permit.
This is a pool in the backyard, right?
That is correct.
How close is the shed to the pool?
Um, approximately anywhere from eight to 10 feet, I want to say.
I think that the drawing you're looking at, that the layout of the pool is not accurate.
Okay. Because it looks close in the photo.
If it was within 10 feet of the pool or 10 feet of the house, less than that, there would be additional variances required. So I believe that he's 10 foot away from the house, at least 10 feet away from the pool, so you don't have any issues with additional variance.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have one comment for the board's consideration. Based on the location of where this is, I don't think it would be terribly appropriate for the property to have any driveway running to it. I know there's been testimony that it's supposed to be stored in it. Um, no ATVs in that nature necessarily, a paved area to get something into the shed, but in the form they want to consider a potential location, not expecting a driveway over there as part of this, because there's already quite a bit of driveway out in front of the house and bringing that more around here would be a big problem.
Right, understood. Yeah. Would you have any problems?
I agree with that.
Do you have any problems with that, um, as a condition of approval, that you wouldn't put a driveway up to it?
That I wouldn't put a driveway up to it?
Right, right.
No, I don't have no problems with that.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple more questions. These are just standard questions. Are you going to have any electric power to the shed?
Eventually, I will. I would like to, just to have some lighting in there.
What about water or sewerage? No, okay.
No, no water, no sewer.
Are you using the shed for...to run a business? Personal, personal?
Storage. Like I said, I have two...
Yeah, I'm just getting it on the record, yeah.
I feel like that's more of an eyesore than anything else.
So there's no business being run out of the shed?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Open it up to the public? Have a motion to open up to the public?
So moved.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Make a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's your, um, thoughts on this application?
I'll make a motion when you approve it.
Is there a second? Joan, roll call?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Latanzi?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. God bless.
Thank you. You'll have to speak with Andrew and...
No problem.
You'll have a moralization in 30 days. Okay, last application, 2204 Tesla Inc.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Duncan Prime from the firm of Prime and Tuvell. I represent Tesla with reference to our application here this evening. I think the board is familiar with my site. It is the existing...site of the existing Wawa convenience store with the sale of fuel out on Route 9. For purposes of the record, located at 969 Highway Route 9, also known as Block 440, Lot 3.01 on your tax map. As the board will recall, this site was originally approved for Wawa a couple of years ago, actually back in 2019. Tonight's application has absolutely nothing to do with the Wawa use itself. We do not propose any changes to the Wawa that was approved or was the subject of a settlement agreement. I see Mr. Simon sitting behind me. I know he was in...he represented an interested in party at the last proceedings here, but this application tonight is simply for Tesla. It is simply to install charging stations at the existing Wawa, a portion of the existing parking lot, along with the charging stations is the equipment, which we'll talk about shortly, that go with the equipment, but the extent of the proposal is to move the air pumps that are there on site and to install the Tesla equipment. Uh, the site, excuse me, the prior application had conditions of approval. I know there was a settlement agreement with the two parties. This application here tonight does not propose any change to that settlement agreement, does not exacerbate or violate any of the existing or previous conditions of approval from our prior approval. So that is the introduction tonight. I have two witnesses. I have a rep from Tesla. I have a civil engineer. I'd like to swear both and have them both provide some brief testimony on where we're proposing to do this. That's all right?
Yes.
Council come on up, we'll swear you both in. France, you first. Raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand. Whole truth. Let's swear it's the truth, the whole truth and not about the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
France, let's get you up first. France, what's your full name?
Franz Gerdis.
And your position with the company?
I'm a senior design manager.
And how long have you been there?
Since July.
July, okay. And you've overseen this proposal here, this plan?
I'm covering it for my teammate, but very similar plans.
Intimately familiar with it?
Yes.
Great. So there's some questions in the planner's letter and I'm sure the board has familiar or similar questions. So walk me through. Tesla drives up here, we want to charge a vehicle. What happens? They pull into the site? Absolutely. You're screaming.
For the record, can you just spell your name, sir? Last name Gerdis. G.E.R.D. as in David. E.S.
So France, I was asking, there is...say a vehicle's pulling in, they pull into the spot where this is supposed to be, what happens? Walk me through a typical charge.
If they're ready to charge, they'll back into the space, get out of their car, grab the handle from the Tesla charge post, plug into the vehicle, and they can use the store, sit in their car, about 20, 30 minutes, charge will be done, and they can go. And it's dependent on how low the battery is.
Is 20 or 30 minutes the average charge? What's a typical charge at a Wawa location?
Yeah, for these chargers, it'll be between 20 and 30 minutes.
Okay. So the chargers, are they for Tesla vehicles only?
Uh, currently, yes.
Any adapters?
Uh, right now, it's just for Tesla vehicles.
But open to it in the future perhaps?
Yes, we're looking at it.
Great. Any limitation on hours of operation for this thing?
No.
Any Tesla employees out there in case something goes wrong?
No.
Say something goes wrong, what would happen? Say if there's a malfunction or something? Is there a danger with the electrical burner?
No, there's safety equipment in our chargers and the inverter is involved, and if there is any issues with anything in the site, say if there was graffiti or a non-working post, the Tesla car and the app will give you...you have options to get service there.
If kids were to come out on the site at 11 o'clock midnight, try some mischief out there, is there any danger in case there are no chargers?
No, no.
Not at all?
No.
That concludes my questioning for our representative from the company. Be happy to answer any questions that the board or your professionals have.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
When a car isn't there, what's the accessibility for just a pedestrian coming by and lifting the handle? Do they have to use a credit card or something?
No, they could lift the handle, but nothing will happen. The post doesn't work unless it's plugged into a Tesla.
So it has to actually go into the port of the car?
Correct.
And then it starts its process?
Yes.
Couple questions. Now, how many units are going to be there?
How many?
How many charging stations?
Eight stalls.
Eight stalls will be there? And, um, just for my curiosity, what does that cost for a half-hour charge?
Um, it depends. It varies on the location, so different states, it depends really on the local utility cost. We just charge whatever costs us to get the electricity.
Right, okay. And you said there are not going to be any universal adapters for other, um, cars?
Not at this time. Right now, Tesla superchargers only charge Teslas.
Will there be a sign there, Tesla only or something like that, so people will understand that?
No, it...I mean, the stalls say Tesla on them.
Okay.
They all have Tesla signs right on them.
Right. I don't have any questions. Any other questions?
Question, Chairman. The air pumps, where are they going to be relocated to?
I have our civil engineer sworn and he's going to give you a quick overview of where everything's going on the site in two seconds.
So does the person who owns the car, do they have to like swipe a credit card or some ID, or does it identify the car?
They park, plug it in, sit back and relax.
Somehow it identifies the car?
The car will tell you where the charging station is, get you there. When you get out, you press the button on the charger and it opens the carport, plug it in, it charges.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman. How far is it from the gas pumps? The charging station?
We're going to walk through that in one second.
Okay.
Any other questions? Proceed.
Dan? Dan, you were previously sworn. Full name?
Daniel Terabokijaj, D.A.N.I.E.L.T.A.R.A.B.O.K.I.J.A.
Andrew, who do you work for?
I'm currently employed as a project manager at Dynamic Engineering Consultants located at 40 Main Street in Tom's River, Jersey.
And how long have you been employed with Dynamic?
Uh, for roughly seven years since 2015.
And you were involved with the preparation of this site plan?
Correct.
And how many hearings have you testified at, Dan?
This will be my first time before the Saraville zoning board and I have testified. I recently passed my professional engineering exam, so I've only had the opportunity to testify before one other planning board.
Although you're young, you've been working in the field for seven years?
I have over seven years of experience in commercial, residential, and industrial land development and I've designed numerous Wawa and Tesla charging facilities throughout the state.
Have you presented it in front of others, only boards, did you say, or not?
Uh, just one other opportunity before the Tom's River Planning Board for a separate Wawa site. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept his credentials or...
Second motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Dan, I just advertised you'd be walking us through where the charging stations are being proposed on site. Why don't we do a quick overview of what's there now and what we're going to change and where the Tesla charging base is proposed?
So as Mr. Prime noted, the subject property is identified as Block 440, Lot 3.01, located at 969 U.S. Route 9 in the borough of Saraville. The subject site is currently located in the rural highway business zone and is developed with a Wawa food market and fueling station, as many of you are aware, that received approval back in 2017. As Mr. Prime noted, the proposed site improvements and project scope are fairly minor in nature and are limited to eight Tesla electric vehicle charging stations in the northern portion of the site adjacent to the fueling canopy. We will also be relocating two Wawa air pump stalls adjacent to the current fueling tank area. The application does seek design waiver relief from two sections of the Borough off-street parking and circulation ordinance as identified in the board professional technical review letters. However, it is important to note that these design waivers were previously sought and approved under the prior application. The first one is under Section 26-998-1B1 of the Borough ordinance, which requires parking spaces to have hairpin striping. We are currently proposing the Tesla charging stalls and air pump stalls to maintain the single line pavement striping, just to be consistent with the prior approved layout. The second design waiver was from Section 26-98-1B6 of the Borough ordinance, which requires sidewalk to be installed along the frontage of the site, between parking areas and principal structures, and along access aisles and driveways. Just due to the existing site rates, there's no frontage currently along Route 9 of the site, and we were just maintaining the existing pedestrian access with no changes to the overall Wawa site layout, which includes loading, circulation, lighting, stormwater management that would alter the prior use variance approval.
There was a question from one of the board members about distance, approximately from the gas pumps, fuel pumps.
Yeah, so this aisle currently today is approximately 30 feet, so it'll be about approximately 30 feet from the Wawa canopy.
Dan, there's also a question about in the landscaping section of planning review regarding the relocated shrubs proposed within approximately three feet wide area between the fences. Question was, will there be enough space for the shrubs and any required maintenance?
So we previously met with the board professionals at a technical review committee meeting and decided that it would be better just to relocate those shrubs. We have plenty of space in the area. Any shrubs that will be removing, that will be disturbed as part of the proposed improvements will be relocated to other portions of the site in the surrounding area.
Any other issues or comments in the board planner or board engineers review?
No, we will comply with all technical review comments. Thank you.
That concludes our testimony.
Thank you. John or Jay, do you have any questions of them right now?
Not a straightforward application. You know, we're going to see more and more of these kinds of facilities and every gas station will have more problems.
And there's no safety issues at all, what do you think?
What are the variances?
Um, really, it's just an amended site plan application associated with the previous conditional disapproval. There's no new variance being created by the project.
Just a couple of questions. Is there a canopy or a roof over these charging stations?
There are not.
No, there is not.
Are there any additional lights, lighting?
No, we're going to maintain the existing site lighting that's out there today. We previously submitted a lighting plan to the board professionals, the prior one, and it's sufficient lighting for this area of the site.
And what about signs? Do you have...proposing any new signs like Tesla charging station term here, something like that?
There'll be their standard sign post that just has the Tesla sign indicating that it's a charging station. I believe there's a detail on sheet seven or eight of our plan set.
All of these signs are on-site at the charging location, correct, Dan?
Correct.
So nothing, nothing new?
No changes to the Wawa signs, freestanding signs, or any building mounted signs.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Gerdis will tell you. The car actually tells you through the iPad and it asks where the charging station is and if it's available to be charged, there's a line, everything.
I have a question, and I don't even know if...
Who has the liability on these machines? It's Tesla. Wawa has no liability on these machines?
No, we do. It's Tesla liability, sir.
Okay.
So I don't know if this is even pertinent to what we're discussing here tonight, but I do have a question. So I travel frequently to West Virginia and now to Happy Valley. Whenever I see these types of Wawas, especially the newer ones like on Route 9, why don't you just put them in? I'm sure you have some sort of agreement. Why don't you just put them in at the time of construction? Like, why wait two years?
I represent both companies, so I've suggested that as well. It's just the way they do things.
Okay.
At some point, Tesla has to agree and want to go there. Wawa has to want them, but as we move forward, I think you may see more of that.
Yeah, just curious.
I'm actually doing three right now that are going to be built at the same time. And there you go.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Another question, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Chairman, you have the sole propriety of the Tesla alone on that property, or will other companies come in with other cars and want to implement other charging stations?
Great question. There's no exclusive agreement, meaning if there's another company that rises up and challenges Tesla, they're free with Wawa contract and put their own charging stations there.
What's the capacity that you see putting charging stations on that location?
Capacity for Tesla right now is determined to be eight. Whether that grows, you know, we may be back at some point.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to indicate, if there are additional charging stations in the future, they'd have to appear before the board to get a variance as well. If something's proposed, you'll have to grant approval for it.
Is there enough space on this property to do that?
We're not sure what they're proposing. There are other parking spaces behind the building, but that's not before you this evening. You're just looking at the eight. If somebody wants to put five more, they've got to come here and demonstrate why it would be appropriate.
Very good, thank you.
One last question from me, anyway. Are these things adaptable to be universal?
I have an answer, but I'll let... I'll let France answer that. Right now, we're testing universal charging in Europe and Asia. We're just not ready for it here yet. Might be something you say.
And another question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
It's all new to me about this charging.
Absolutely.
What's the capacity of electricity to the grid? Will it do any downtime to a grid?
No, I believe PSEG is the utilities area. Correct. They wouldn't give us... JCPL. JCPL. They wouldn't allow us to build in this site if they couldn't handle the capacity. Like, I have sites in that situation where either we would need to build a new substation or get new feed in, but utilities are very smart about EV charging in terms of allowing us somewhere where it's only sufficient capacity.
One more, one last question. And how does this affect the overall parking of the site? Because when it was granted, there was a certain number of parking spaces that were needed. Now that these are...
There was a state statute passed adopted issue in the summer that allows, not only allows these permitted uses everywhere, but also commits accounting parking spaces too in order to facilitate development. So it does not impact on parking. It actually increases the limited...
So if a customer that wanted to go into the store parked at the charging station...
The Wawa's position that there are enough EV chargers, charging stations, that they have Teslas coming on the site already, but instead of parking in a normal spot, they'll now park and charge.
What if someone, what if someone did park there for some reason?
If we're unable to, six are able to dedicate... Six of the eight, only two actually dedicated for Tesla. So actually, people have a non-EV car, Ford, truck, parking spot, six of them. Whether they will or not is another question, but they are under the agreement with Tesla.
If this...I'm going to...I hate to put you on the spot here, but as the police officer of the group, so we now...the board of ed now picks up our students there in the Wawa parking lot, okay? We just switched that. I can't imagine it would affect anything, I really can't, because it's almost typical to a regular customer, okay? But would you...I mean, you're traffic guy too, right? Would you...do you foresee any issues with that at all?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one last question, sir. Last, last question. Are you moving the air pump somewhere else then, that it's going to be available?
Yeah, we want to show it on the plane, just a little bit to the side, in front of the base.
Directly adjacent to the...these will be the charging stations, the air pump stalls will be relocated.
Where's the air pump right now?
They're here now.
They're currently where the charging...
You're just moving it over a few feet?
Ten, ten feet.
Yeah, about 10, 15 feet.
10, 15 feet.
Okay, thank you. Both, excuse me, still two air pumps?
I believe so, yes.
Correct, two air pumps.
And the same number of parking spaces, the air pumps did...
Yeah, so we're not touching the parking count. As you know it out there now, it's the same amount of parking.
Whatever you're doing with the air pumps didn't affect the parking?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? We'll open up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Make a motion to close it to the public?
So moved.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, what's your desire in this application?
Chairman, I move that the application be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Joan, roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?[1592.72]